And we have one more card. Just because we have one more card, and so it's Lynn Adams.
I'm gonna keep this short and sweet.
I was just gonna turn mine on.
I didn't even know I had it on.
Hmm?
I knew what was in there.
It really stinks. You probably can smell it.
Sneezing.
You guys probably can smell it. All right? That's not even all the litter that they picked up at Lindemar. It's small, it's condensed, it's ripped up apart. It's not necessarily dropped at the beach. A lot of it is washed up from the beach, but all of it has come from the streets. It's come from us. So, the two Earth Day and Coastal Clean Up Day events, in nine years, I'm gonna leave you with this, recruited over 44,000 volunteers who gave up over 88,000 hours and removed 136 pounds of trash, recycles and green waste. That's 68 ton. And that's with the reduction in the last two years because less people are littering, more people are picking up, and we have given people hope, and we've united the community and raised awareness about this cause.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, that was the last card. And I'm gonna, I'm going to, I'm gonna bring it back to council. Councilmember, oh man, they're all up. But councilmember Dugree was first.
Oh, was I first? Oh, goody. I'm gonna sneeze now from the debris, but anyway. Yeah, I wrestled over this, and at the Economic Development Committee, we have been excited about, and in Pacifica, for marketing Pacifica, because there are so many activities and so many things and so many assets that Pacifica has, that we're really, looks like we're moving forward with that type of marketing plan and flesh it out with what constitutes in Pacifica. So, I'm looking at the budget, and I see a lot of money for the attorney, and I like attorneys and I don't like attorneys, but anyway. The attorney budget, I think, is extremely important, but I think that we could take some money from that because we're in a way, almost assuming that there will be a problem. I think the ERAF funds would be a worthy, looking at it for, first, I wanna talk about the non-governmentals, the nonprofits, because there is a difference between profit and nonprofit to be covered in that. So, I would like council to look at that. Going off the in-Pacifica type of things that we seem to be moving towards for economic development, looking at the, is this the right time? Because we've had the worldwide depression and recession, is this the right time to pull the rug out from the four nonprofits, and including the Chamber, but I'll separate that a little bit? Is that, because all of them, including the Chamber, constitute the is of Pacifica. And without preserving the soul and the spirit of Pacifica, I think the in of Pacifica that we are embarking upon will be a much harder hill to climb because we have just pulled out the essence of Pacifica. So, I think it's, it's like what we're going to invest in? Are we going to hold it tight to ourselves and not risk? And then what do we have to show for it? Very possibly, we'll have to show not only nothing, but going backwards and having to pay for the things that we're giving up. So, whether that's the money for the Beach Coalition and all the work that they do, or for the Resource Center, or for the library that covers so many children and seniors, as well as the rest of us. So, I'm very concerned that this is just not the time, that we're right there when we can look, and I've been on council, yes, 12 years, and so people can say, "What the hell have you done?" Well, there's a lot. And there was an economy dip that did happen, and whether people like to believe it or not, I wanna blame the great alleged four environmentalists. I've seen where Beach Boulevard itself was definitely blight, and then because people believed in what Pacifica had to offer, people started buying and shaping up Beach Boulevard. We're moving towards Palmetto. We're using the history, et cetera. We're understanding and believing in economic development coordinator. These all things are positives and pluses that build upon what's already been there. We know we have mandates, and we will get dinged really big if we don't meet those environmental mandates. And well, communities should be, especially coastals. The ocean and the creeks as well, I think sometimes we don't value our creeks. The creeks in the ocean are being protected, and like they said, public works have to do all that? That would be a humongous, humongous, humongous. And I'm saying again, I think the investment in these, what's on our list, the investment there is an investment. It's a little bit of a risk, but it's an investment that I believe has paid off, and this is not the time to pull out of that investment. So, I'm very concerned, and I would prefer that we look at taking away some of the attorney and believe in ourselves a little more, that we won't need that, and looking at the ERAF and any other component that would give us that. And so, I would like council to do that. For the Chamber, which is a profit-making business, one would assume, I think that we've grown in our ability to put our arms and hands together to work together. I think being in the San Mateo County Silicon Valley Business Bureau has been a tremendous leap forward, and I have to give Courtney and the new boards at that time, that I had been preaching that, begging for that for years, and she understood what it was and went, and we got it going. That was not something council could do. That was not in the prerogative of council. So, I think that was a big thing, and you heard it from Courtney herself, that was huge, and that they've not missed one step in utilizing it and embracing it. And so, I'll say again, I think the is of Pacifica is all of these together, and I see it as an investment. Every investment is a risk. I really think we're gonna pay for it in many ways. We're gonna pay for it in the spirit and the soul of Pacifica. I really urge us to find a way, and it looks like the ERAF and using some of the attorney money, at least those two things would give it all to us. So, I beg of you to look at this.
Okay, councilmember O'Neal.
I was gonna actually ask staff, what exactly did you want from us right now? Did you want us to give direction? Because I thought we were taking in, you know, we were, I mean, that's not what I thought we were supposed to do.
Well, I would love direction, but you're not being, you're not required to give me direction tonight. June 9th, I'll be posing some specific questions to you, that I will need definitely direction at that time, and as commented earlier, that you'll have the full scope of all of the funds to take into account as you're making all of these decisions. So, June 9th would be just fine for direction.
Okay, I would, basically, you laid out, I think it was, four things for if we wanted to fund Resource Center, which of the four we would want? You know, I would like the details on those that you can partake, and I also would like to see the full picture before I make any sort of decision as to how we move forward. Okay?
Could you be more specific about the detail on the options that I included in the report?
Okay, I know the vehicle replacement fund was one. Okay, I'd like the details, I think I already asked for, about the, you know, where are we at? What wouldn't be funded? Those type of things. Average age of the vehicles, or whatever. The ERAF funds, I do just like some, I wanna be sure that we're not getting into a cash flow situation, because I know at the school district, we actually, for, when the state was deferring payments, you know, we actually had to borrow to meet payroll for a couple months. Okay? So, I just wanna, I'm concerned about cash flow and carrying it, you know, any of the entities for eight months, nine months, when our reserves are so low.
Thank you.
And then, I know the other, I'm sorry, it's getting late, and you had two other scenarios or two other options, if I remember?
One of them was to increase fees by another percent, which would generate between $30,000 and $35,000, and then reduce the amount that gets funded to that amount. That's another option. So, those were the three, and then had been mentioned perhaps that the county might be interested in funding like the Resource Center. That might be the fourth one that you're thinking.
Okay. In regards to any sort of fees, I would like to kind of, maybe just flesh those out a little bit more detail into where we, you know, which fees, what's your estimate, that type of stuff. I just really feel with more details, and then also when we get your other information on the other accounts and stuff, I think you can make a more informed and more data-driven decision than just kind of grasping right now. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem.
First, I had a question for Lori, and that is, Tom Clifford came up and he spoke about his concern in regards to if we borrow this money from the wastewater treatment plant and then potentially having to ask for a bond measure, and we never know when we might need this money. Do you share any of those fears in terms of borrowing this money? This 2.1 million?
Sure. As council knows, there is a fund that's been designated for, to be used at the end of the 20-year life of the plant, to either upgrade it substantially or potentially replace it. That fund, I believe, has got about $5.7 million in it currently. That's the fund that I'd be pointing to for the borrowing, because we would be paying it back in the timeline that that money is expected to be needed. So, it would be paid back by 2020. There's another fund, that's the fund balance for wastewater, that's substantially more than that. And so, you'll be hearing more about that also. I keep deferring to June 9th, but this information will be shared with you at that time in more detail. But the funds that I'm pointing to for the loan, we would be paying them back within the timeframe that they were designated to be used when they were created, when that fund was created.
Okay, and if we didn't do that, we'd be looking at an additional $600,000 that we'd have to cut from the budget, correct?
For next year, $641,000, yes.
And what would that look like?
Well, it could be six people. If it was layoffs, it could be other, very substantial. At this point, given where we are with the budget, it would be something very substantial that we would have to be considering.
Okay, thank you for that. In general, I just wanna make a few comments. I think everybody shares the feeling that it is crazy that we are sitting here having to grapple with making $3,000 cuts here and $10,000 cuts here, and all of the nonprofits, all of these non-governmental agencies that we are talking about provide vital services to the city. I have been intimately involved with just about all of them. I can't even begin to tell you my experience that I've had on the Pacifica Beach Coalition. I remember when I took my daughter and a group of girls to an Earth Day event, and we picked up over 1,000 cigarette butts, and they all agreed they'd never smoke again. And I'm sitting here tonight, my mom has lung cancer. If I think we saved one girl from ever smoking, it's worth it right there. That $3,000 is nothing. But here we are, and the fact is, we have to make these decisions. We have to come up with, if we don't pay for it here, how are we gonna pay for it? What are we gonna cut from the city staff? I cannot believe how influential it was to do the homeless count with the Pacifica Resource Center. A phenomenal group of people. There is no doubt in my mind that every dollar that goes into that, into the Resource Center is needed, and actually, every dime that goes out of that Resource Center is invested in our community. I think everybody knows that when you, the little money you have, you invest it in your community. I think there's economic reasons to support the Visitor Center, the Pacifica Beach Coalition, the Pacifica Resource Center. It's amazing what these organizations have done for our city in terms of generating interest in our city, and, you know, I know Courtney brings, and the Chamber bring in the travel writers and people coming, the video you had with Malu bringing the beauty of Pacifica to all around the Bay Area. A lot of these things are absolutely priceless, and we're putting numbers on it, like 10,000 or 3,000 or 80,000. It's just unbelievable. And the whole thing is that this is all about money. It's all about our economy. It's all about the fact that we have to generate more income. I hear it loud and clear, and I know it's something we have to do, but we are in for an uphill battle. That Pacifica Beach Boulevard project that we have been striving to get accomplished, that's $500,000 in generated taxes that it's gonna bring to the city. We need several of those projects in order to get out our heads, you know, out of the sand here. We really need to work hard on generating an economic base, but we are somewhat limited. So, this is gonna be an uphill battle, and I'm telling anybody out there listening, we have got to work together. We have got to find common ground on what we can agree on and what we can do to generate more revenue in this town. It is vitally, vitally important. So, here we are all sitting. Nobody wants to make these cuts, but we've got to examine, what are we gonna do? What else are we gonna cut if we don't make these cuts? I look at, I look at our city services. I look at the senior services, and I look at the childcare services, and all the other incredible things, and everybody's making, working with stone soup here. It's, it's just amazing. And so, somehow, the tide has got to turn, and I'm gonna do everything in my power. I am supportive of the idea about the ERAF money, and I'm hoping that in time, that this tide will change, and we will be able to generate some more funds in order to save these vital city services to the city. But I will say, as supportive as I am, I've got to know what the bottom dollar is. I've got to know exactly what we're talking about. If there is room to use the ERAF funds, if that's a reasonable alternative, then I am very supportive of it. And, you know, I didn't mention the library, and I know what an incredible asset that is to our town, but possibly, we could use 60 hours a week, and that wouldn't be that detrimental to our community. But it's nothing I wanna do. It's, every, every cut is just ugly and not what represents our city, but I will do everything in my power that's fiscally responsible to support these non-governmental agencies. That's, that's what I could say today, and I'll find out more information on the 9th of June.
That's usually the speech I give. Good job. I won't have to repeat it. Actually, I was going to, to say that, this is kind of a weird thing to say in front of people, but I'm just gonna say it. Somebody said to me, "You're gaining weight." I said, "Yes, it's budget season." I'm a stress eater. What can I say? And it is, this is, this has been going, well, I know Sue commented, but truthfully, this isn't about any four people or anything. This is about the city of Pacifica and what we have been, and what we want to become. And this is about being a coastal community, being over the hill from many of the organizations that, and the stores and the places that bring us revenue. As I keep saying, we get one cent on every dollar, so that's our, our sales tax, and our sales tax, you know, we can talk about the economy tanking in 2008. All it really hurt was our property values and not a tremendous amount. I mean, it hurt the values, but it didn't have the same catch-up on what the city took. We had very little fluctuation in, in sales tax to stress what the Chamber came forward with. I pointed out that our biggest fluctuation in sales tax in town is actually when gas prices go up. That's when we have a big fluctuation in sales tax. So, and that's sad, because I do look at other cities, and I sit on these boards, and I talk to folks that have an econ, there are people that have a Department for Green, and the Beach Coalition and everything else would be in that department. It would be, it's just for environmental issues, and they run their climate action plan, and they do all that stuff, and we do that in addition to. I said to, I was looking at Menlo Park, that is less population than us, but yeah, they have all those businesses and things over that are, like Facebook, for example, has joined, but they have 69 staff in just their police department, and almost 100 more staff than we have, even the whole city, just in their, in their kind of general fund, not counting other things outside. So, I think about where we're at as a city and realize that over the life and course of this city, this council, no matter who's sitting up here, have struggled with these same issues. And there was a time that we had a little bit more money, but we've had structural deficits for years. Previous councils in the 90s often borrowed from the enterprise fund in the wastewater treatment plant, and they didn't borrow, not back then, not until the Bighorn decision, and that changed. And, and we couldn't co-mingle those funds, and that's good. But that's how we made up for things, and we made up for things in a lot of one-time monies. And consequently, now here we are, I mean, I can only speak about my six years, but we had a structural deficit of about $3 million, and we have cut every single year that I've sat up here. And every single year, we've talked to the public about what we're cutting, who we're cutting. We cut police, we've cut, we cut staff, we've cut numbers, we've cut benefits, we've cut what people take home in their paycheck, we've cut all kinds of different things. I was saying to somebody today, it's so sad that we had to organize a group of volunteers and get donations and businesses to have a friggin' holiday party to just say thank you for staff who haven't gotten anything, any increases for years. And now we are without all nine contracts. We don't have contracts with our employees. Not that we shouldn't, we should, but we're, we've expired, we're still in negotiations. We have, all nine are out there. We're in a position of, we've cut everything. We've cut, and we knew that this was coming. We were down to the things that make my heart bleed to have to even think about cutting. But we put up for revenue measures in a town that we don't have a tax base, we don't have where we, and we didn't want that. We didn't wanna pay anything more. So, at this point in time, I'm with Karen on the issue of, we have to pull together and do a lot. This whole project built out will net us about $500,000 in taxes. $500,000. It's not like we're getting out of the hole overnight. We need 10 of these. 10. And we, we gotta find the places for them, and that takes honest-to-God, consistent work out there. And we've gotten ourselves, this council is more involved in the county than, it's been a long time, in actual activity that brings home money. But it's gonna take more than that. It's gonna take a lot more than that to get us to the final goal of actually being sustainable and solvent. I know that there is not one of the things on this list of additional, I mean, really, what's the fabric of our community? Some people who were speakers, we know this. I too have been involved. I, I told Lynn, I brought my checkbook. I was ready to figure out how I could write a $3,000 check myself, and I can't. I wish I could, Lynn. I would do it myself. But it's just not, I mean, that's not sustainable for next year either. We have to figure out what to do for every single year going forward. I was in Redwood City today, and among other meetings, was looking at what else we can do in terms of social services and how we can support, because it isn't reasonable. Of course I know it isn't reasonable to go over the hill. You can't, you don't have a home, and we have crappy transportation, because we've, we've cut that at every level in San Mateo County. We spent two days in the San Mateo County Progress Seminar, the city manager and I, listening to how San Mateo County is the second richest county in the state, and how we have more money than absolutely most counties. I am down there on everybody's doorstep at this point in time, and I'll continue to do that. So, my preference, I guess, is to, for direction, because I have to give you some direction, is to get to that point where if people can tolerate it, we look for the ERAF to fund some of these items rather than cut them, and in the meantime, look for sustainable sources of revenue to support them. And I mean, sustainable. I'm not talking about borrowing Peter, we're not, we're just not there. And, and as one last thought, just as a comment about the city attorney, you're down $90,000 in your budget estimate, I just wanted to point out. And in my tenure, you're more than half gone compared to what we had with our own city attorney. So, I'm, I'm all about that. Thank you very much for keeping the costs down. I appreciate it immensely. That's why we contracted. However, if there's anything else we can figure out, I would, I just know that we've gone through all those, and I don't know where to go. So, we have to look for sustainable sources. Is that gonna give you enough information to go on for right now?
It is. I'm clear on what I need to bring back to you at the next meeting.
And you're clear that we're just broken-hearted and desperate?
Let me just add that as your new city manager, this is not the topic that I would have wished to bring forward at this time. As I have said verbally and in the reports, these organizations provide tremendous service to the city. It was not easy by any stretch for me to even bring this up with you, but we have had a history, as you all touched on, of really not investing sufficiently in the city.
Yeah.
And not taking care of our, sort of our core business. And we're there. We are there. That is something that we need to do. And so, that's what made it worth, as your new city manager, coming to you and recommending that these very worthwhile, amazing, truly amazing organizations, that we not continue to fund them by writing them a check.
Yeah.
Again, all the in-kind services that we provide to them, we will continue to do that, but the checks, I just can't recommend to you that we continue to do that.
Well, we're gonna figure out a way. But in the meantime, I can speak for myself, and the council can agree or not, I knew we were in trouble. So, you were part of our solution. Thank you for still taking the job.
You're welcome.
With that said, you don't need any motion or any action from us.
I do not.
We needed to go through the detail of this tonight. Thank you for, very much for staying with us, everybody. I have spoken with our city manager about the last item. I need a motion from the council, if you will, to continue it to...
June 5th, or June 9th, rather. Bring it back then.
June 9th.
I do have a question.
You have a question about budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so what are you going away with? I'm not clear where we are here.
I'm going away with understanding the difficulty that you're all facing with accepting my recommendation. I heard from several of you that you'd like to look at the excess ERAF as a funding source. And I'm also not asking for a final decision tonight, but I will be asking for that on June 9th. And if you wish to have it be as part of the current general fund budget, you will need to tell me that on June 9th, and then I will explore the options I've put forward or go to excess ERAF. or go to excess ERAF, or whatever the council's pleasure is.
So you've had that much so far, so you're talking about you're still open to more on June 9th, is that what I'm hearing?
I need final decisions on June 9th, yes.
But you just said you were open to whatever the council wanted to suggest.
That's when I need your decision.
All right, thank you.
Just for clarity, not more questions, June 9th. June 9th, we have to make a decision.
Correct.
Okay.
If you get more information, you're going to have more questions.
Yeah.
You have to make a decision at some point.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
But you're not saying you can't ask questions?
No, no, I'm not, I'm saying that...
I'm just making sure.
Yeah, all that will be, okay. Councilmember O'Neal.
Take a motion to continue the last item to June 9th.
Thank you so much. And Mayor Pro Tem.
I pressed a button, and I don't know where I'm at, as I've had.
Thank you so much, and, and thank you for continuing, and Chief Tasa, I'm sorry, but, thank you, you're here anyway. And good night, everybody, sorry, oh, wait, wait.
Need to vote on the motion.
Oh, we need to vote. I'm in pain. I twinged my neck, I don't know.
I pressed a button, I have no idea how to get out of there.
It has weather.
My God.
If it's on the microphone, it's going to talk to you.
I pressed a button, and I've done everything, I can't...
All right, everybody, thank you so much, and good night. The little button on the side will always clear, this one.